Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees, regular meeting of Thursday, March 21st, 2024. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, undebowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
President Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Marshazga.
Here.
Trustee Mateo.
Here.
Trustee Koss.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Attorney Pickroll.
Here.
Manager Francis.
Here.
Also present Clerk Soul.
Thank you. We have a quorum for this evening's meeting. President's report. I'd like to send the villagers congratulations to Choo Choo Restaurant and Scott Zimmer for being featured on Fox 32 over this past weekend. The segment highlighted Choo Choo's special St. Patrick's Day menu. And Choo Choo is one of Riverside's longest-tenured restaurants celebrating its 27th year in 2024. And it's one of the gems of the Village of Riverside. Thank you, Scott, for everything you do for this village and the great food that you provide for us and the entertainment value. Upcoming events. The village's annual egg hunt will be on Saturday, March 23rd, at 10:00 a.m. sharp. So that's this coming Saturday, 10:00 a.m. at Big Ballpark, and is for all children ages 10 and under. Bring your favorite basket and collect all the eggs you can. Some eggs will have a special prize. This event is free. And knowing our Parks and Recreation Department, I'm sure it will be a great event. Two upcoming events at the Riverside Public Library. World Water Day with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District is on Saturday, March 23rd, 2024, from 1:00 to 2:30 p.m. Representatives from MWRD will be in attendance to talk about World Water Day. On March 25th, this coming Monday, at 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., the University of Illinois Extension will present a seminar on natural lawn care. Is that the library?
Correct.
At the public library, at the Riverside Public Library. These two events are co-hosted by the library, Riverside Landscape Advisory Commission, and the Riverside Cross-Community Climate Collaborative. Upcoming meetings, village meetings. On March 27th, next week, in Room 4, Planning and Zoning Commission will have their regular monthly meeting. Remind everyone that there's no village board meeting on April 4th, two weeks from tonight. On April 8th, the Sesquicentennial Ad Hoc Commission will meet in Room 22 of the village hall. On April 11th, the Police Pension Committee will meet in Room 22. Also that night, April 11th, the Preservation Commission will meet here in Room 4. On April 9th, the Landscape Advisory Commission meets in Room 22, here in the village hall. April 15th, Historical Commission, Room 4, right here. And our next meeting is April 18th, here again in Room 4, two weeks from tonight. Again, we will not meet, I'm sorry, four weeks from tonight. We will not meet in two weeks, on April 4th. Manager Francis.
Thank you. I just have one quick item to remind residents that village offices will be closed on Friday, March 29th, for the spring holiday. Our office will open again that following Monday for regular business hours. But as always, residents can conduct business online and send emails to village staff, of which they will respond upon our return that following Monday. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you. At all of our village board meetings, we set aside a time for anyone in attendance who would like to address the village board on any matter that's not on the agenda. Now is the time for that. If so, if anyone has a non-agenda item they would like to address to the board, now is the time. I'll remind everyone that agenda items, we will allow public comment during each agenda item on our agenda. I don't see any raised hands, so I assume no one has any non-agenda items. Consent agenda. Clerk Soul, please call the consent agenda.
Approve Voucher List of Bills, March 21st, 2024. Approve Village Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting Minutes, March 7th, 2024. Review and File Village Board of Trustees' Executive Session Meeting Minutes, March 7th, 2024. Review and File Department Reports, Finance, January 2024. Community Development and Public Works, February 2024. Review and File Board and Commission Minutes, Riverside TV Commission, December 11th, 2023. Economic Development Commission, Regular Meeting, January 10th, 2024. Preservation Commission, Regular Meeting, February 8th, 2024. Ad Hoc Sesquicentennial Planning Committee, Regular Meeting, February 12th, 2024. And Landscape Advisory Commission, Regular Meeting, February 13th, 2024. A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to enter into various purchase orders for fiscal year 2024. A resolution authorizing a $415,000 inter-fund transfer from the General Fund to the Capital Projects Fund to fund future capital expenditures. A resolution authorizing the village manager to waive competitive bidding and issue a purchase order for the not-to-exceed amount of $26,398.31 to Halloran Equipment for the purchase of battery-powered landscaping equipment. A resolution granting the village manager signatory authority on behalf of the Village of Riverside to enter into contracts with the state of Illinois, including joint participation agreements for the purchase of Rock Salt. A resolution authorizing a temporary use for outdoor dining, execution of a license agreement and/or indemnification form, or agreement for use of public property, outdoor dining area, Andrea Torres, doing business as Dulce Mommy Cafe, One Riverside Road. A resolution amending the Village of Riverside Employee Handbook, Section 4.1, Educational Incentives, and a motion to approve a West Suburban Special Recreation Association Board Representative and Alternate.
Thank you, Clerk Soul. Does anyone have any need to pull either of these items off the consent agenda? Seeing none, Clerk Soul, I'm sorry, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion is made.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second by Trustee Marshazga. In the discussion of the motion, Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Department, Board, and Commission reports. We have a discussion to temporarily suspend enforcement of an ordinance that limits the height of grass during the month of May, commonly referred to as Nomo May. Director Tab.
Good evening, everyone. If you recall, last year, the Landscape Advisory Commission came to the board requesting suspension of an ordinance that limits the height of grass to eight inches. The board ultimately granted them two weeks, so May 1st through 14th. So the LAC is once again here this evening. Commissioner David Tarverdi will speak once again about Nomo May. David?
Thanks, man. So I'm David Tarverdi, on the LAC, here to talk about Nomo May. We might talk a bit more about it being Nomo April. It's been kind of interesting weather we've had lately. So currently, the municipal code ordinance, 771, says you can't have your lawn more than eight inches. We propose to suspend that till Mother's Day this year, so slightly different than what we talked about last year. There's declines in native bee populations in Illinois. Bees are effective pollinators, as I'm sure many of you know. It's important for more than 150 different food crops and pretty much all the fruit grain crops in North America, frankly, in the world. The U.S. Forest Service says that without pollinators, it's going to be a big impact on the human race. Terrestrial ecosystems will simply not survive. 1,400 crop plants grown around the world, almost 80% require pollination by animals. And in the United States alone, the pollination of agricultural crops is valued at $10 billion annually. So Nomo May, as you probably read about and talked about last year, is something that's participated by over 1 million people in 177 cities and communities. The Riverside LAC has been educating residents, as requested by the board, about the importance of pollinators. And we've been promoting native plants, especially spring bloomers. This is a part of a long-term plan encouraging the use of native spring blooming plants to support native pollinators. The LAC is investing in over 100 native plants, including wild blue flocks, Virginia bluebells, and butterfly weed from funds allocated by the board to be distributed to residents to support native bloomers and pollinators. The LAC continues to sponsor events to distribute or sell native plants to local vendors. Our next sale event will be June 2nd, with details to follow. The village president also mentioned 7:00 to 9:00 at the library. We'll have folks from UIUC who we've been talking about with regard to Nomo May initiatives in terms of its applicability to the Village of Riverside. So there's many tools in the toolkit to support pollinators. Nomo May is one of those. It's one program that residents can participate in to support pollinators before people start spraying their weeds, rake their leaves, and other beneficial grasses are cut. Dr. Alan Mobley, professor of biological sciences at the University of Illinois Chicago and director of the Woodland Prairie, in Glennview, says broad application and adoption of the initiative would have many beneficial effects on the environment. Researchers at Lawrence University in Appleton, Wisconsin, led by Dr. Israel Del Toro, concluded that the effects of our Nomo May effort document increase in both urban bee and floral abundance and diversity. UIUC Extension Service, as well as the University of Wisconsin Extension Service, has provided literature that indicates that Nomo May initiatives can be beneficial for some residents to utilize. One thing that they do note, specifically UIUC, is that if you have a very good turf grass without many flowers in there, it may not be applicable. More of a garden section on your property is probably more beneficial. They also mentioned for our climate here that April is probably better than May typically, but that kind of depends on the year. So as approved, as was approved by the village board, in 2023, residents can display signs that were provided by the LAC, of which residents that participated in last year should still have. They're nice, pleasant slimes. Can see it here. And so what we're asking for is the board to, again, approve participation in a Nomo May initiative, specifically the suspension of 771 until Mother's Day this year, because we're having kind of unseasonably warm weather, and that's probably going to continue, frankly. And folks, that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Tarverdi. Any questions of the commissioner? Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Discussion by the board.
I'm in favor of this until last year or year before.
I'm in favor of it as well, and my kids are super in favor of it, so they don't have to mow the lawn for a while.
Yeah, it's a good effort all around, and I very much appreciate the education and the free spring ephemerals that are being distributed to our residents. So thank you.
So just to clarify, the direction or the motion would be to suspend the enforcement of the ordinance until Mother's Day.
Mm-hmm.
So even in April, if, given the weather, as the commissioner said, could be some people wanting to mow their grass as early as April this year. Any other discussion or comments? If not, would someone like to make a motion to suspend the enforcement of the ordinance until, oh, sorry.
This is just a discussion.
Okay. So we can't take action tonight?
We can't take action.
Okay.
But we have absolute discretion to not enforce it. That's the direction of the board, so it cannot be enforced, but we just don't take official village board action.
Great. So it doesn't need to come back to us?
Correct.
Okay. That works. So is there consensus then to proceed with?
Yes.
Yes.
Suspension of the ordinance.
But starting now, not May 1st.
Starting now till Mother's Day.
Which is perfect. June, May 12th. May 12th.
May 12th, yeah. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, I'll put my hand up. Thank you.
And let me also add that this directly satisfies one of our goals, one of our strategic goals, of promoting sustainability and helping the climate. So thank you, Landscape Advisory Commission, for that. Pending business. Update regarding electrical vehicle charging station at Riverside Foods. Clerk Soul.
Good evening. I'd like to provide a quick background on this topic. If you don't recall, in December of 2022, the board approved an agreement with Riverside Foods to install a charging station in their parking lot. The agreement provided for reimbursement of Riverside Foods' cost to purchase, install, and activate the electrical service to the station. This project was partially funded through a $10,000 grant through the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and we passed, the village passed, the grant on to Riverside Foods. As we approach one year of the station's operation in May, village staff and Riverside Foods have prepared usage and operating cost reports, which are in your agenda materials, for the EV station. The agreement the village has with Riverside Foods provides that the village will reimburse Riverside Foods for its operating cost at the conclusion of each year of operation for the first five years. Currently, the total reimbursement for the first year is $826. E formal reimbursement will be submitted in advance of the village board's June 6th meeting. Other than that, we'll open it up for any questions. I believe Peter from Riverside Foods is in attendance as well, if there are any questions.
Mr. Boots, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing in particular. I would just say, from my personal experience of being with the business, it was a bit of a learning curve, both in the installation and the maintenance of it. And I think this is accurate for a lot of folks, and I think Mr. Sol could see that there's a lot to be learned here. There's a bit of rush to the market with a lot of these stations. But it was successfully installed. People do use it, and we saw that trajectory where, that people are using it. So it was great. Now we're learning a little bit more of the maintenance and the rates and how to operate this. So I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to work with the village on this and have this asset in town. You know, it's a fantastic asset. You know, our downtown isn't on a main street. It's intentional, you know? And our businesses all feel that as well. But it's a, it's a nice asset to have in town, and hopefully we can find new ways to even grow its use and maybe pull some people through looking at ways to perhaps play with the advertisement and rates of it. I think that's kind of where we can move forward to in the future a little bit more. But no, just thank you for the opportunity to do this, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from trustees? Well, thank you, Peter, for partnering with us on this project. It seems to be something that will grow over the years. We've planted a seed for electrical vehicles in our downtown, and we look forward to seeing that grow and expand in the future. Thank you. Ordinance, next on the agenda, an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter III of the village code, relating to feather signs. I did have a request from Trustee Evans to table this, since she was unable to be at the meeting tonight. She would like to comment on it. So that is up to the board to, you would need to make a motion, and I have a consensus to table it. So if you're in agreement with tabling it, I would ask for a motion.
To a date certain?
To a date certain, yes. April 18.
Okay. I'll make that motion and have it table to that date.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second by Trustee Marshazga. In the discussion on the motion, Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is approved. Presentation of Cross-Community Climate Collaborative, C4, Framework for Climate Action and Resilience Plan. Assistant Village Manager Monroe.
All right. Well, thank you very much. It gives me great pleasure to provide a little bit more context to what we've been working on in collaboration with the C4 team over the past year. It's easiest to probably just walk through the agenda items in the form of a presentation for the benefit of anyone who wants to catch up on this process and view it later. So the Cross-Community Climate Collaborative was a regional initiative that the Village of Riverside joined with 15 other municipalities in the West Central Cook Municipal Conference in late 2022. The three imperatives of the C4 activities are to work together to further resiliency, equity, and climate protection. And the emphasis is upon reducing our carbon emissions as a community to net zero by 2050. So essentially, reducing all of our climate emissions and carbon emissions and greenhouse gases to that date. So I can switch. Background, I already talked about the timeframe. We started meeting with the C4 team in December of 2022, and they've met monthly to create this framework that we're working from. In January of last year, we held a community event, it was really well-attended, to get a lot of wonderful community feedback. What are we doing right? What would they like to see? And the community also expressed their opinions through a survey that was issued to mirror those activities, and we received hundreds of ideas, hundreds of responses also throughout the summer in leader surveys. We presented the information to the village board in February, and then we also presented the evaluation tool that the C4 team was going to use, right? So we approached this very methodically and logically in terms of what the best practices are, what rose to the top as a priority for the community, and so on. So the background continued. We, in April through June, we released seven community surveys that I had mentioned prior. In June, we joined, as a village, joined the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus Greenest Region Compact. This is well over 100 communities throughout the Chicago metro region are part of that effort. And so in joining that, Riverside is just in support of many of the objectives that the C4 initiative mirrors. In June of last year, we held an asset mapping activity where we asked residents to come and kind of map out what we felt were in need of some protection, or were mild risk or major risk from flooding, from extreme heat, what have you, and the things that we enjoy, right? We love our trees, but we also need them to be protected. That was that activity. We finished the gap analysis that goes with this, kind of what are our community needs in November of last year, and we shared these priorities with major community stakeholders. So school districts, the township, the village board, we shared it with Brookfield Zoo Chicago. So a variety of stakeholders saw this information and were given the opportunity to comment. We held an open house for our residents, and some of you attended individually to express your opinion. And then we have shared the draft framework again with the public for comment, right? So what you see before you today is fundamentally what's evolved through this process and what we're presenting to you tonight. So the C4 framework does have 32 initiatives, which express the interests and values of our Riverside community. We built the framework based on what our residents told us. Each initiative is an opportunity to develop actions, including more analysis, more exploration of what this could turn into. It's not an acceptance of specific actions today, okay? We're offering all of our stakeholders a common reference point. So if someone else wants to take the framework and build their own plan, they can do so. Households can use it if they want to jump on something and do it. And it provides a basis for the development of this Climate Action and Resilience Plan that the village has talked about developing. We did budget for that in our capital improvements plan for this year, and pending, you know, support for this plan, we would go forward with that. As I mentioned, the C4 framework doesn't create new obligations for the village or for our community members. It doesn't require a specific timeframe for when these things are going to happen, or it doesn't specify costs or allocate specific expenditures, right? We haven't budgeted for the things that are in this framework. So, yeah. So the conceptual initiatives, right? We had a big, lots of public feedback and best practices. And so for each of these things, the C4 framework uses six categories, and we developed a framework that go with these, right? So I'll just broadly talk about each of them, so you can know more. The first one is resource regeneration, and broadly, this is to take steps to use resources and energy more efficiently, align policies with climate goals, switch to renewable energy, recycle more, and advocate for divestment from fossil fuels. And I listed the various village board strategic goals that this aligns with. You just passed those at your last meeting on March 7th. So this broadly is just resource regeneration is talking about how we're using our resources and focuses on energy and waste predominantly. Okay. Connectivity and transportation initiatives, this is the second of those six pillars, which would promote eco-friendly transportation options and public transit access, support EV readiness, reduce vehicle idling, and enhance community resilience in emergencies. Right? So focus on transportation, bicycling, bus access, train access, and EV adoption. We have living infrastructure, which some of our committees, specifically Landscape Advisory, has been very engaged with, where we're reducing residential flooding, promoting environmental and landscaping best practices, encouraging volunteerism and stewardship and care of our public areas and private areas, and reducing the usage of gas-powered equipment. Right? So a lot of things that we've started talking about or have been talking about for many years and want to continue to find solutions. Health and well-being is our fourth objective, where the ideas are to promote active lifestyles, social connection, reducing isolation. You're looking at inclusive policies and decarbonization, and integrating social services into public safety operations, supporting community gardens. These are all just topics and ideas that came to the top of the pile, and each of them would need to be assessed, and really, community partnerships, right, is another area where we'd want to continue to look for implementation later on. The last two, this is prosperity and economy, related to our economic development strategies. What can we do in thinking about sustainable business practices, increasing access to education, innovation, growing green businesses, exploring adaptive building reuse, and leveraging ecotourism for economic development purposes? Riverside is known as a green community, and we want to continue to share those wonderful experiences with people who can grow from that. The last of these is place and community, where we're ensuring housing security, reducing noise pollution, improving outdoor lighting practices, enhanced indoor gathering spaces, and preserving Riverside's landmark status, architectural diversity, and community spirit. There's all kinds of these things that make up a comprehensively good place to be, right? And we're marrying that with environmental initiatives through this framework. So the next step, this is what we're looking to do. We want to develop a climate action and resilience plan, and we would request proposals from qualified firms to do technical analysis of the framework to refine and identify recommended actions, right? We would prioritize the activities based on carbon emissions reduction. We would develop this written plan from our framework, and then also, as part of that, we'd make sure it aligns with our board goals, our village values, and operations, capital planning, and then... And then, another thing we'd like to do with this project is to create templates or toolkits for further engagement and communication about, you know, about these actions, right? The next steps. So I have a timeline in this, and I'll just say that we can do this as soon as, next week, we're ready to send out information to potential consultants. We would review those and provide time for them to respond, bring the selection to the village board for an agreement, and then we would start work with various check-ins throughout the year and hopefully finish that by the end of the year. So I will wrap with saying that the plan itself, as I said, there would be analysis done, so we'd see data and specific actionable goals for our operations, and as part of those goals, there would be a timeframe, proposed or estimated costs, and then other resources or partnerships that we'd need in order to actually do the things that are in the framework or, and decide if we want them in this plan. We'd also just make sure that there were reporting measures, making sure we're meeting our carbon emissions targets, and then include various other appendices. So, I just want this evening to see what the board's support is for us moving forward with a climate consultant to work on this plan development. Do we accept the framework not as a formal plan, but as guidance for us to do more work? I can take any questions.
Thank you. Before we go to questions or go to the public, Trustee Marshauska, is there anything you want to add in introducing and presenting this?
Well, I just want to thank every single resident that came out for one of these events that participated in the survey that, you know, took time to engage with us. I want to thank those of you on this board who said, "Hey, this is really great. I'm not on your C4 committee, but I'd like to talk to you about this and learn more, and, you know, I have thoughts." And, you know, we had sit-down discussions, and it was really valuable, and everything that everyone contributed found its way into our discussion and what you see before you in this, you know, detailed framework here. So, I think we as a community should be really proud of this, and I want to thank staff, especially Ashley, for pulling it all together in such, you know, with such professionalism. And anyway, I'm very excited about next steps.
Thank you. And I should say for the public's benefit, the reason I called on Trustee Marshauska is that her and Trustee Evans have been our representatives to the C4 group, and they've put in a lot of hours and a lot of time, volunteer time, to make this happen. So, with that, questions for staff? Comments, discussion?
I have two questions. What makes a firm a qualified firm? What characteristics will you be looking for? You've, just recently, you mentioned climate consultant. So can you share with us what the search will entail?
Oh goodness. I, I will, yes, I can be more eloquent in just a moment to answer that question.
You're always eloquent.
Yeah, you know, having a basis and background in completing prior climate, climate plans would be ideal. I have a whole section on exactly that. This, this document I'm looking at is almost 20 pages long, and so I wanted to make sure I'm getting you the right information. Okay. So, they would have a foundation in climate science, they'd be able to do greenhouse gas emissions accounting and calculation, be aware of what the current net-zero policies. They would have someone who can manage a project and has successfully done this type of plan before. They would need to analyze complex information and create it in, put it into language that is able to be understood by, by anyone who's a stakeholder, essentially our community and any of us in this room. And then, although it's not mandatory, working on this type of plan in similar communities to the Village of Riverside, perhaps within our region, our size, any other characteristics that may be shared, and then anyone with, like, a sector-specific knowledge, so if they have exceptional skill in transportation initiatives or the energy industry, those would be listed as things that we would look for in a, in a firm's experience.
Thank you.
If there's anything else you'd like me to add or change, I have the ability.
One thing you touched on in the report, and I imagine the committee has talked about it numerous times, it's not clear to me, and maybe over the year it will become clear to all of us, to what extent these plans will apply to village administration, and how much it'll apply to residents, you know? We can't force people to reduce it, but as going forward, will that be addressed?
Yes. So, as we move forward with working with a consultant, we would take the framework from a perspective of what are objectives that are centered and things that the village has control over, whether it's by our internal, you know, and administrative operations, or is it something that the community can adopt and address in their own way, either organizationally or individually? I think it's, it's common for a plan like this to be multifaceted in the ability for people to take and adopt it as they need to, but we specifically are going to be looking at it through the lens of what do we need to include in our, in our budgets? What do we need to include in our, our just regular operations as a way of doing business? So, if there's a initiative where it's talking about green procurement, well, we wouldn't expect just the community to look at that. We would look within and see what opportunities we have to think about our purchases more sustainably. So, if that's the answer to your question?
Yeah.
Great.
Any further comments, discussion? So what we're looking for is a consensus to proceed with the RFP, correct?
Okay. Yes, I'm in favor of it.
Very good. So, and what is the budget number on that?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five thousand dollars, and that was in the budget?
Correct.
We approved for 2024.
Yes.
So, do you have what you need?
If it is under twenty-five thousand, then staff would not need to come back to the board, unless the board would like to see who ultimately was the most qualified firm. Okay, okay, perfect.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep the momentum going.
We're on it.
Next on the agenda is a resolution adopting an intergovernmental risk management agency excess surplus utilization policy. Manager Francis?
That is me, thank you. If the board recalls, in fiscal year 2023, the village board elected to change our insurance deductible from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars per claim, and this was effective January 1st, 2024. As part of that discussion, the village board was very cognizant of the fact that we have approximately 1.5 million in excess surplus that is sitting at Irma that does accumulate interest based on their investment returns. And so, and we've been building that balance up since approximately 2014, when we, we went to the optional deductibles, and instead of utilizing that excess surplus to decrease our contribution, we started building it up. And now it has grown to the 1.5 million point. As part of that discussion, because the board was very cognizant of the fact that we weren't going to be increasing our budget line item for the hundred thousand dollar deductible, that if in fact we needed to draw down some of that excess surplus, that we should have a policy and a procedure in place to do so. And so, before the board is a policy in which staff will monitor it, finance department will note it on their monthly reports, and then we will do a true-up or reconciliation at the end of the fiscal year in which the board can decide if they want the village to request a withdrawal, or if they're willing to have that budget variation. And so it becomes more of a budgetary end-of-the-year cleanup item versus every time we have an optional deductible that goes over fifty thousand, having to do these one-off transfers, because that can be cumbersome and might not be quite as effective, especially if we're deriving a surplus in the general fund or other funds. So, are there any questions?
Questions or comments? We, Manager Francis and I discussed this, and we liked the end-of-the-year reconciliation because that leaves the money in the Irma fund, which earns better returns than we're legally able to do on our own with our own money, so that maximizes potential for money. No questions or comments? Someone like to make a motion to approve the, the resolution?
So moved.
So, seconded.
A motion by Trustee Mateo, seconded by Trustee Gallegos. Any discussion on the motion? Doc, Clerk Sol.
Trustee Marshauska?
Aye.
Trustee Mateo?
Aye.
Trustee Koss?
Aye.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is approved. An ordinance amending Title X, Chapter 6 of the Village Code relating to adult-use cannabis business establishments. Planner Siren?
Thank you. Since the board expressed support for having this considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission, they held a public hearing and made a recommendation, they did not recommend to change the operating hours for cannabis dispensaries. They did recommend changing the language around that to clarify that while dispensaries can operate between those hours and not required to, which it could be interpreted that the existing language suggests. The Preservation Commission also reviewed this, because it's a tax change to the amendment and they're required to, they found that it wouldn't have an effect on the status of the historic designation of Riverside. Staff also reached out to stakeholders in the Berkeley Road area that the village has been working with to improve traffic in that area, and we haven't heard any response from them or any other residents about this change.
Before we go to the public or go to questions or comments from the trustees, I wanted, based on conversations I've had with some people over the last couple of weeks, I wanted to ask Attorney Pickrell to clarify the standards or the parameters of considering a text amendment versus other types of zoning considerations.
Thank you. When thinking of zoning relief, it's useful to think of it as two broad categories, text amendments and everything else. And think of a text amendment as changing the rules of the game, and then everything else is playing the game, you know? So the text amendment, what that does, and what you'll see here before you, is you're changing the actual text of the zoning code. And when doing that, although the Village Code identifies a number of factors one can consider, there really only is one factor, and that's, is it rational? And all those factors identified in the Village Code are certainly related to that ultimate question, but if there was ever a challenge related to a text amendment, the court would simply ask, is it rational? And whether it complies with one factor or not is not going to be decisive. So you could satisfy all the factors, have it still be irrational, and satisfy, none of the factors would have it be rational. It's just, it's a totality of the circumstances review, and so when reviewing it, it should be discussed that way. And again, there's certainly nothing wrong with going through a prescribed list of factors that you think are relevant, but the ultimate goal is overall rationality. But that sets the rules of the game. Everything else, special use permits, variations, plan unit developments, those all apply these rules. Each one of those has a series of specific factors that need to be satisfied in order to grant the relief. For example, variation requires a hardship, and then the, there's a number of other factors identified in the Village Code, so when reviewing whether you should approve a variation, it's useful to walk through every single one of those factors, because if there's a challenge later, that's exactly what a court's going to do. I would only add, again, that the courts do, they take a de novo review, they look at everything that's totality and make another judgment, but they will ultimately ask the question, you know, was, you know, with any one particular factor, was it rational for the village to go one way or the other on it? But their analysis would be guided by those factors. So, that's the fundamental difference.
Thank you, thank you. And before we, first, are there any questions for Planner Siren or Attorney Pickrell? If not, I think I would like to first go to the public, because I do believe we have someone from the public that would like to address this.
Can we come up together? All right. You may introduce yourself.
My name is Grace Daly. We live right near the cannabis store, and also we say no. We do not think it should open earlier, because one of the reasons is, I know a lot of, we have a lot of kids in our neighborhood, and those, everyone likes to walk or bike to school in this nice weather, around eight, maybe earlier. And since the cannabis store opened, there have been a few cars, like, like racing down our street. So, I do not think it would be safe for everyone, or especially the kids, if they were walking to school in cars would be like zooming down the street if they were trying to cross the...
So, if you want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks for listening.
I'd like to add a couple things. Sure, okay, thank you. You get to stay up here with me, though. Okay. So Julie Daly, 521 Berkeley Road. We have had a few conversations about the cannabis dispensary that is located two buildings from our house, and we appreciate all of the collaboration that the village has provided with extra signage to help mitigate traffic, to slow down traffic, to direct traffic away from said children. We do appreciate that, and we do see that there is, we have seen an improvement or a decrease in the number of people coming in off of Harlem. However, it is a very busy business. They are open 13 hours a day, and they do, we constantly have a full parking lot, there is extra traffic coming through our neighborhood, we smell, we smell the smell of pot all the time, there are people smoking in the parking lot, there are, we have made complaints through the, my neighbors and I have made complaints through the Riverside Response. We've found people urinating in the parking lot, that is happening, we have seen it. The lighting has been an issue, my neighbor has, has taken months to have a response on having the lighting reduced that goes directly into his house. We understand that there needs to be a balance of what a business needs to be successful. This business is also in a community, and it is up against a community with a lot of children, and we think it is unreasonable for this business to open any earlier than nine o'clock. And it is already open until 10:00. And just, so you know, of cannabis dispensaries within a 20-mile radius of us, 88% of them open at 9:00 AM or later, only three open at 7:00 AM or 8:00 AM, and 81% of them close at 9:00 PM or earlier. So our cannabis dispensary is already open longer than most of them in our area. So we would like you to not allow them to open any earlier. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Daly and Ms. Daly. Appreciate you taking the time to come out tonight. Before we go to discussion, there's one, one comment I wanted to make. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Sunstrom?
That's me.
Thank you.
Eric Sunstrom, 33C East Quincy, been a townie for 66 years, owns Sunstrom Insurance Agency that's been in operation for over 50 years. I'm basically speaking about this as a businessman. There are multiple businesses that are open at 7:30 in town, Riverside Foods, Dolce &amp; Amici, Gas Stations, Minuteman. What you're doing is basically you're dictating how a business operates, which, at least from the Chamber of Commerce point of view, we think it's kind of unfair. There might be a bias against this place because it is a cannabis place, and for years, everybody thought cannabis was bad, but now it's legal, and I can guarantee you one thing, it's helped me because I got a totally trashed-out back from 50 years of sports. And in order to sleep at night sometimes, I have to smoke some marijuana, so it's kind of nice that there is a place nearby. But- But the point being is, is that what are the exact ramifications of being open an extra hour? From a discussion I had with the owner, because we actually hit the owner up for Riverside Arts Weekend for a donation, which he did give us a good amount of money. He said that some of the problems are not his. They are like light coming into a neighbor's place is from the building next door. And he said that he does engender, pardon, he does make extra money during that hour in the morning, because that's when seniors and people with medical cards are more likely to come into his store. I think he made some comment, I don't know if it was on a per-day or per-week basis, of about two thousand dollars. But that's income, and really what you're doing is you're dictating how the guy makes his income. And once again, that's not exactly fair. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board on this topic? I did want to clarify one thing before we go to the board. Some of the issues that were brought up are of great concern to me and to, I'm sure, all of us. We had gotten inquiries about the lighting. We'd gotten inquiries about the smell of marijuana in the neighborhood. Manager Francis reached out to the owners and, at my request, asked them if they would share the onsite manager's phone number and name with their neighbors, so that when there's an incident happening, they can immediately call the manager, and the manager can walk out the door and put a stop to it. When you call Riverside, responds, we have, you know, a police officer may not be right there. It may take some time. By the time they get there, you know, it may be over, they may be gone. So we have taken that proactive approach. And also regarding the lighting, we asked the owner of Starbuds if they would add some more protection over the lighting. They were scheduled to do that today. I haven't heard if they actually did it.
It's complete. They finished it earlier this week.
Great. So it should be, and we corresponded with the neighbors, some of the neighbors who'd asked about it, let them know that. So I wanted to make that clear. Those are issues not related at all to the hours of operation, but they are issues of great concern to not only the village, but to the Starbuds owner, as they could risk losing their license if they have repeated violations of that nature. So I wanted to clarify that. So with that, I would like to ask for questions and comments from trustees.
Well, Manager Francis, a lot of the issues are enforcement. So can you just briefly summarize what enforcement actions have been taken, or how often the police have been there, or?
So I can have Director Buckley come up, but I will tell you that the patrol, that is an additional assignment that Director Buckley tasks with officers working on the various shift, to make sure that they're going by the dispensary. Now, obviously, you know, that's a proactive approach, and they're not going to catch individuals all of the time, and just hope, we hope that the presence becomes a deterrent for people to not behave badly. Additionally, and when speaking with Starbuds, they said they will not tolerate that behavior, and they will ban people from their storefront if they're caught, you know, whether it's urinating on property or utilizing cannabis in their parking lot. Because as President Pollock mentioned, that could jeopardize their license as well. And so they want to make sure that, A, they're being good neighbors, and B, that they're not jeopardizing their business. And so staff has been doing those different items. With regard to the lighting, just to note that particular enforcement item, when Planner Siren went out, the lighting that they had without the shields on them were compliant. However, Starbuds, you know, in discussions with us, said we want to be good neighbors. And so initially, they put it on the three, and, but the neighbor still had concerns or complaints related to the one light that was closest to Harlem. And after many discussions back and forth, while Starbuds did not have to install it, they still did, because they expressed, we want to be good neighbors to the community. We want to be a good partner to the Village of Riverside. So we've done all of those different things. The police department also has their onsite managers' contact information should something come up, or they notice or observe something. So there's been a number of things that we've done with, whether it's traffic enforcement and doing the quarterly reports to the village board to say what the observations are, doing the traffic counts to see what's happening on Berkeley, and trying to keep open lines of communication open, both with the dispensary, but also with the neighbors. And I know Director Buckley, you know, as part of the quarterly update, checks in with the neighbors. But the neighbors, there are two neighbors that do have my contact information in addition to his that can certainly reach out to us as well.
Thank you.
Jessica, one more question. Are there any businesses that we dictate what hours are going to be in operation?
We dictate liquor licenses, that is it.
Okay. Is there any business in that?
Bowling galleys.
Bowling alley.
Is there any business in that district that opens before nine o'clock in the morning?
Yes.
Dentist? Well, I'm sorry?
All the gas stations, they're open twenty-four hours. Sherwood Williams opens at seven in the morning. And our Riverside Foods is not in that district, but it's in our central business district, and as was pointed out.
Where a lot of kids walk on Burlington to go to street. Okay.
And just to clarify, those hours for other businesses, those, the liquor stores or whatever, it's not regulated by the zoning code, it's regulated by the municipal code.
And our liquor license.
Which is a whole different, and while it's still the same effect, it still doesn't change the facts of it, but other questions, comments?
I don't really necessarily see a rational basis for the time of day specifically, but I wonder if it might help to alleviate some of the neighbors' concerns about the children if police patrols were increased during that, you know, eight AM period, right as they're running to school or biking to school.
So, if I may, the challenge with that is all the police resources are at the schools.
They're there already.
So they're, you know, with our crossing guards in the various crossing areas, we have an officer, if anybody's ever gone by one of the schools, you're seeing at least one police officer, if not multiple, just to make sure the traffic flow is happening appropriately, but also just to have a presence too, for just community engagement. And so we do it at all of our schools, and Director Buckley, also, you'll see him, or Deputy Chief Coder, Commander Lozansky also out, in addition to those that are working patrol. Because on average, typically during the day shift, on average, it's probably three officers. So you have to keep in mind, we've got the high school and the different elementary schools, and so.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember start times for everything, because my kids are older now, so.
Well, I know, I'm happy to comment on that point, and I, I have kids, they go to school, right? That's an issue that is top of mind. I do think traffic mitigation is a separate issue here, and I, Gracie, tell me if I've got the timing wrong, but I think the, at least at Central School, they allow kids in the building at eight, and the first bell rings at eight oh five, and then the tardy bell at eight fifteen, or it's somewhere in that zone, right? It's by eight fifteen. And so, again, it's not perfect, but I think, I don't want to dice it too close, but most of the kids have already made their way to school by the time they're proposing to open.
I did want to say one thing, though, regarding the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations specifically. The Planning and Zoning Commission seemed, and I've watched the video of their meeting, and it was clear that their reasons for not recommending the additional hour was, one, they felt that there was a lack of financial information presented to substantiate the expansion of the hours. Two, they mentioned that eight AM is a peak traffic hour, and that this business would add traffic to that peak. And third, they noted that carryout liquor sales are restricted to nine AM. I respect, you know, our Planning and Zoning Commission does a tremendous job. I have, I have great respect for them, but I have to be honest and say, I think they looked at this from the wrong perspective. First and foremost, the analysis should be, as Attorney Pickrell described in talking about text amendments, I would say that the analysis should begin with, what is unique about this particular business that we're going to restrict their hours differently from everyone else, or almost everyone else? Personally, I don't see a difference. I don't see why, if there was a bakery there, or a hair salon, or whatever else, they could open at seven AM, and the impacts on the neighbors would be the same. Maybe even worse, higher traffic, you know, depending on the business. So that was one. Secondly, financial considerations are not part of this analysis. If, if they came to us and said, we're not going to make any more money, we just want to pay our employees to work another hour, so what? You know, that's not a factor for us to consider. Our job is to protect the neighborhood and to protect property values in our village. And then, you know, as I said, too, there's no reason to think that a cannabis dispensary will generate more traffic than the myriad other uses that are permitted at that location. That, that's another reason why you might restrict a particular business, because they somehow create a unique traffic level, and that is different from everyone else in that category. I didn't see any evidence of that, and intuition tells me that there is no difference, so. And then finally, while it's true that the hours for carryout liquor is different, as I responded to one person who brought that up to me, I said, well, two wrongs don't make a right. We should look at that sometime, whether we want, if it's necessary. I suspect the only reason that's still on the books is no business has ever asked us to change it. Maybe they don't care. But if, certainly if a business out there that sells carryout liquor wants to start selling at eight AM or seven AM, I would personally be open to considering that. Anyway, I just wanted to clarify that, because I think, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission spent some good time on this. I respect what they do, but I didn't want to just ignore their recommendation. I wanted to be specific about why I at least, not that I necessarily will vote on it, but why I at least feel that they kind of looked at this in the wrong way, so.
I'd like to add just one thing, and you're saying, President Pollock, when I had said earlier, too, that it's the totality of the circumstances, that is within the context of zoning. One thing to remember about zoning, zoning is concerned with use. You know, how is the property used? How is that use impacting another entity? Now, you'd mentioned about the financial factor. You're correct, the financial factor really is unrelated to how the property is being used. So when you, when you say, is it rational, just, is it rational for this piece of property, for this regulation which will govern property within the village, to be, to allow that property to be used in a certain way? So that's what I'm going to make.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from trustees?
Well, with respect to my former commission, they were speculating on traffic data that they didn't have, but we can get those data. If we decide to allow them to open at eight o'clock, we have ways of monitoring it, seeing if there's a drastic increase, and if there is, if there are safety issues, then we reconsider.
Thank you. Yeah, good point.
I'm in agreement with President Pollock's position. I, as I mentioned earlier, I think traffic mitigation is a separate issue, and I think we've been doing good work there. I, I like considering this from an enforcement perspective. It's always something that we could revisit if that particular hour presents a particularly different traffic concern, but I think, to the extent we can separate those two issues and continue to monitor, I'm in favor of that. As I mentioned, I also looked around at the other businesses that are in town, and particularly in that area. And again, with tremendous respect to the commission that looked at this, it does feel a bit arbitrary in nature, just to decide that this particular business can't open until that time, and so for that reason, I'm in, I'm in alignment with you.
If there are no other questions or comments, would someone like to make a motion? And based on what was presented to us from the Planning and Zoning Commission, if you were to make a motion intending to approve the change from nine to eight AM, you would make a motion to amend Title 10, Chapter 6 of the Village Code relating to adult cannabis business establishments, amending the hours of operation beginning at eight AM instead of nine AM.
And Doug, this is a motion to change the code, not to approve some sort of variance?
Right.
Okay. Then I'm going to make a motion to change that code to eight o'clock in the morning.
May I clarify the motion? So that motion is to essentially approve this ordinance, but then changing the number nine AM to eight AM with everything else remaining the same?
As in from shell to can, like Planning and Zoning specified?
No sooner than and no later than.
Correct. There was a number of other grammatical changes clarifying that they're not required to be open for that period of time.
Then yes.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, seconded by Trustee Mateo. Any further discussion on the motion? Doc, Clerk Sol.
Trustee Marsh Azga?
Aye.
Trustee Mateo?
Aye.
Trustee Koss?
Aye.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion is approved. Next on the agenda, discuss application, discussion of the application for economic development assistance for 2720 Harlem LLC, 2720 South Harlem Avenue. Assistant Manager Monroe.
Thank you. So this item before you is for discussion and guidance as to the request from 2720 Harlem LLC. Dr. Normati is the, acting as the applicant here and representing his property. And this issue has been in various levels of discussion regarding improvements to the property and the site plan. Since the initial, a couple of variations were approved for the property with respect to the parking lot design and layout. The most recent site plan approval includes some improvements to the parking lot, including restriping of the lot, inclusion of additional landscape buffers, the addition of bicycle parking as a feature of the lot at the corner of Long Common and Harlem. And as part of that, there's also, with the site plan approval, a responsibility to include a fence at the rear of the property border. And so this request is to basically enhance the required work to make the property compliant with the zoning approvals. But there was discussion about inclusion of bicycle racks that match, potentially match our village street furniture downtown, our streetscape. Dr. Normati's request includes for the village to pay for and acquire those bike racks, but he would install them. And then the other elements would be up to the village's discretion as to the level of support for anything further to this request. If there is more that we would like to see that would enhance our community as a gateway, Dr. Normati's expressed, you know, openness to discussing that further and enhancing the corner, essentially, as a northern border of the community. So if there's anything specific you want to say about the property, your interests?
Yeah, I guess it's more just a discussion, engage the level of interest from the village, because prior to acquiring that property, when the village owned the additional parking lot, you guys had made some recommendations as to enhancing that site with some greenery and possibly bringing in some joint signage as, as it is a gateway into the Village of Riverside, and doing something there with the signage, and then requesting that a bike rack be also included in the design. And then it was brought up back then that maybe we can even, you know, enhance the area around the bike rack and do something like pavers around there, or something to that extent. So I guess it's more of just like, you know, now that we're in the actual implementation phase, what do we want to do? And I expressed back then, and I'm still on board with some of those changes, I just want to understand, like Ashley mentioned, to what level does the village want to commit to those projects?
So, so we, as preliminary information, and to provide you a little bit more information, if we were to incorporate elements of the village's streetscape, it made sense for us to consult our engineers, Burke Engineering, to look at what, what those resources are, what the cost was for us to do certain elements. They have that information, as they helped us design that. They have that information as they helped us design that. They they could, as part of this, look at options essentially for us. And so we asked them for an estimate of what those options are for different levels of engineering and scope. So what village engineer Orion Gailey provided was was essentially a simple walkthrough of different types of work that they could conduct if the village board wants to pursue anything more than what is already required of this property to comply with the zoning approvals. So if we want to see pavers, if we want to see village streetscape matching, if we want to see some joint signage, Dr. Normati is asking for some support to whatever that request would be. So we could, the board has the option to not provide, you know, support and approach this from a different angle or and allow Dr. Normati to complete the project as required. Or if there's something else that we'd like to see as a gateway that's attractive in a different way, then it's up to you to kind of see what that level would include. So we walked through a couple of these things and I'll let you discuss.
Thank you, Ashley, and thanks, Dr. Normati. You've been partnering with this village for several years now, and we're on the verge of making that a gateway into this village that we could all be very, very proud of. So and you've been a big part of that for us. So as I understand it, and having been on the board previous as a trustee in the past when this was came through the board, it's my understanding there was a kind of a informal consensus from the board that we would use our business district funding for enhancements above and beyond what Dr. Normati is already required to do by code. And as I understand it, he is required to put in a bike rack, but not necessarily the one we want. And he's required to do some landscaping, add some landscape materials along Harlem and to finish the striping of the parking lot. So I think what we're really considering here is how far the the board wants to go in doing enhancements. My personal opinion of that is I would prefer to have, to use the initial grant funding to hire Burke Engineering and Doug Gotham, who designed Burlington Streetscape, and have them come back to us with very minimal concepts of what our options are and what those estimated costs would be. And then let us, based on the cost and the design, the concept designs, let us then pick and choose what, how much we can afford to spend or how much we're willing to spend.
Is your goal to have some sort of uniformity?
Pardon?
Is your goal to have some sort of uniformity on these items that we have?
Right. I mean, there are clues. Burlington is the obvious indicator of the design that we would be looking for, but we also have the entryway signs at Forest Avenue and other features of the village that could be utilized. Based on what Burke and Doug Gotham did for us on Burlington, I'm very confident that they'd come back with some appropriate and very exciting options for us. But that would require us entering into a contract with Burke and having them prepare those concepts and then coming back and work with Dr. Normati and come back to the board for final approval before we went to full engineering and full final construction drawings. Do you think you wanted to add, Manager Francis?
No, I think that covers it.
Ashley?
I was just going to clarify that it sounds like what you are going to, conceptually, what you're looking for is to have them take what's defined in the packet as the task two is to prepare schematic plans, potential concepts for the improvement of this area that includes the bicycle parking area. And think about the configuration of what's there, what will fit if there's some type of enhancement beyond a bicycle rack or two, what that looks like. And then and then to come back to us with with that information. So that's, I would say, the closest thing that we would find here. That's a proposed cost of $4,000. Was there was there proposal for engineering on that?
Yes, I think that's what I'm looking for. I don't want to limit their creativity in any way. I want them to, you know, think big, but give us options to go medium or small. So.
To clarify, since we're doing, since we would be responsible for that, is the inclusion of the of our right-of-way area in in that as well?
To me, I, you know, want to hear from the board. I don't want to dominate this discussion, although maybe I already have.
Yes, taking traffic into consideration.
Okay.
Manager Francis?
Sorry. I would say that you're probably looking at completing all the tasks except Task 4 because Task 3, based on some of the things that have just been stated, you want renderings. You want to have something to kind of opine off of. And so with that, they would prepare elevations and renderings in addition to the items listed in Task 2 and Task 1.
Yes. The preliminary cost of that was quoted at $9,600 for 1 through 3. And if there's a refinement, it may be, I would say it's a good estimate, but it may be a little bit more or less than that based on the scope.
If the board is comfortable with saying that they are comfortable with up to the $11,600 because also you talk about the different plantings and signage and Task 4 includes the combined village and business sign as well. And so it almost seems as though you would want these four options to be completed, staff working in consultation with Burke Engineering, but then also working with Dr. Normati to bring back these particular items for for all parties involved to opine upon.
Trustee Marsh Azga.
Just in terms of signage design, is that something that an engineering firm does? I mean, they.
That's a good question. But what I would, my response would be is that actually Doug Gotham is a landscape architect.
Okay.
Working at an engineering firm.
Thank you.
Nothing against engineers.
It is good and important to point out those beautiful Riverside signs that are at the entry and the exit point of East Burlington were designed by Doug at Burke Engineering.
All right. If Doug's on it, then I'm on it.
Further discussion, questions?
Well, I think this is, I think this is one of the major entry points to Riverside. I feel like this is, it's great. There's a lot of traffic going through there. So I think it's it's definitely worth it for us to invest in the look there and to work with you on this because I think a lot of people come into Riverside through your little intersection. And so, yeah, I think it's definitely worth it for us to look into this.
Thank you, Trustee Koss, because that's a good point. I mean, I hear people talk about, when they talk to people who visit Riverside, they always go to that entryway. How do you feel when you cross into Riverside at Long Common? Because that, and we're making it beautiful. I would also add that we are also doing a capital project this year to turn that alley into permeable pavers, which will really enhance the look of that area. And along with what we're doing here, it's very exciting and definitely will will make a difference. If there's no other questions or discussion, I think we have consensus and direction for staff. We will proceed and we'll see this again someday. Thank you again, Dr. Normati.
Thank you.
Discussion regarding wayfinding signage. Assistant Manager Monroe.
Okay. Well, thank you. This is the last you'll hear from me this evening. We had in as far back as 2017 and 2018, the village had approached as part of our, kind of as an endpoint to the branding activities that had been taking place at the time, worked with those consultants to create a look for signage. And so as part of that, we did end up installing two signs, two wayfinding directional signs at Ridgewood and Gulf and Ridgewood and First Avenue, so on the west part of Riverside. And so at the time, the, there was a set budget. It was a little over $52,000. At the time, there was a decision made to defer additional signs going in for whatever reason, and we ended up putting this on pause. There's been discussion for various reasons at different board meetings that have been talking about, you know, improvements to our business districts, improvements to the trainscape. There are discussions at, from C4 to Landscape Advisory to Economic Development Commission, efforts in bringing together and creating this identity and navigation throughout town to make a variety of improvements for bicyclists, for pedestrians, for visitors, people coming from that Harlem and Long Common, being able to figure out how to get into downtown to go to their favorite restaurant or new favorite restaurant, right? So we did budget in the preliminary information the board saw for capital improvement projects this year for a limited number of signs. There was in the budget seven signs or so. The cost was a little over $3,000. Excuse me, about $5,200 per sign for a smaller quantity, $4,200 for a larger quantity. So if we were to do multiple signs, it makes sense to do at least a good batch of them. We put this on pause. We wanted to make sure and that we had discussion before going ahead with this project as we're approaching the summer budget season already. It would be really helpful to know what guidance the village board has, desire of, you know, do we want to install signage in our parking lots that we're making improvements to? Is there a desire for more directional signage throughout town or concentrated in a particular area? And so what I'm just, I've listed out a variety of signs. There are eight or so remaining on this list, which we have on the slide here. But just getting a sense of, one, are you interested in pursuing wayfinding signage with this same design as we've been installing prior? And if so, what locations? And would this be something we'd be interested in doing phased comprehensively? We would definitely approach both preservation, again, we'd go to Economic Development Commission. Perhaps there are other community stakeholders. If there are people invested in a bicycle community, it would be helpful to know what routes people are really taking. But but that's the general approach in saying if we would move forward with this in any way, we would go back to these commissions before we come to you with a final recommendation.
Thank you.
Yes.
Trustees, what are your thoughts on wayfinding signage?
Didn't EDC do something on this a couple of years ago about wayfinding signage?
Yes. They ran it back. This is their list. So we installed parts of it, but not all of it.
So why are we going to detract from what has already been started? Why would we detract from it?
Because it's a question of, is this a priority of the village board? It was during COVID, certain capital items were paused, and this was one of them. And during, actually, prior to COVID, it was prioritized at one point in time of board members saying, we just want to do these two. We don't want a bunch of signs. And so that was also a creation of the pausing the process. And so really, now that we have essentially a completely new board, with the exception of President Pollock, it's really asking the question of, is this a priority for the village board? Do you want us to pursue it and approximately how many? Do you want to do all of them and we incrementally do it? Or is it not a priority? And so then if it's not a priority, staff will allocate their their time elsewhere on other projects.
I would still say it's a priority. So I like us to move forward with the entire list.
I think the way I would look at this is EDC did a plan for wayfinding. They sent that plan up to us and left it up to us on how to implement it over the years or implement it all at once. At that time, the board chose to just implement two of the signs, three and four, right? And I think it's come back to the board before and we said, no, not this year. So we're back again to say how much you can do, nothing or you can do it all.
Well, I would just like to put out there that if one of the proposals was to do one at Harlem and Long Common and if we're talking about potentially doing the other project with Dr. Normati, we don't need to do that one. So I would put a pause on that until we see what the project looks like. In looking at this list in general, I don't see Quincy Street involved at all in their plans or consideration. And I would just put it out there as a question to the board. If we're going to do something relating to signage, would we like to include the Quincy Commercial District as well? I think my answer would be yes, if we're going to do something.
It's on some of the signs, Quincy Street Arts District.
Oh, I understand, but I just meant in terms of the list, the locations that were prioritized by the EDC and presented to the village board that are up there, 1 through 11. I missed that. Sorry.
If I may.
Yeah.
So if we did any additional signage on East Quincy, part of it is staff has been working on applying for the ITAP grant. So similar to what we applied for when we did the Burlington Streetscape. And so as part of that, we incorporate the signage and so we would get some grant funding match for that particular signage.
So there's a reason to hold off on it.
I would recommend it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And similar, similar to your comment about Long Common in Harlem, I would say the same thing about, number one, Harlem and Burlington. We've got a potentially a development project there that we may be able to partner with them when they come forward.
Okay.
And any signage that the village board is looking at installing in within the boundaries of a business district would be a qualifying expense under that business district as well.
Which would include Quincy and Harlem, Burlington and Harlem, Long Common and Harlem.
And also if the board elected to do anything, I don't think anything is on the list, but anything at Harlem and Ogden that is also a different business district.
So we've got one sentiment to proceed with the entire project.
Well, 1 in 9 can be put on pause now.
Yeah, yeah, except for those exceptions that we just noted. Others?
Well, coming into this, I would prioritize gateway signs because we want people to get in here. On the other hand, it's going to take a long time to get approval perhaps. So maybe we want to start with the internal ones if we wanted to do a phased approach.
I mean, people are using more of their phones, the technology that they have. It's not easy to navigate through Riverside once we have the crevaceous streets to a brand new person. So, you know, once they're in here, that's going to be very helpful for them to follow stuff that could be confusing to someone who's not familiar.
Just as a more minor point, I know we talked about this at the Parks and Recreation Board, Parks and Recreation. Board, Parks and Recreation Board meeting before, the Route 66 bike path comes straight through Riverside. It's actually Long Common is straight down there. It's actually pretty much a straight shot down Long Common is the Route 66 bike path. And then there is also the Illinois Prairie Path that there, that comes through Riverside as well. And so both of those, both of those paths have been utilized in different Parks and Recreation things, and then in actually different regional things. And you can see the maps on different websites and stuff. I actually think they're on Riverside's website, too. So there are a couple of fairly significant bike paths that come through Riverside that might be worth noting, especially because I, from just anecdotal information, a lot of people avoid that part of the bike path because once they get in Riverside, they can't figure out how to get back out. So it would, it is somewhat helpful. There are some directional indicators and things like that, but, you know, I think that would be nice and possibly even looking at if, especially with the Illinois, the Route 66 one does go through the Central Business District, but the Illinois Prairie Path, I don't believe, I think it was actually directed around it. So it may be possible to amend that so that it does go through some of our beautiful establishments.
With respect to, this is really good information about directional signage. The village has talked about the ever-popular parking lots that we have as public parking or commuter parking. There have been some past discussions about whether there's a desire to have any signage in the lots themselves, or creating direction. Is that something that you would be open to? Or, because it's not on the priorities of the EDC, but just in knowing if there's an interest at all in that.
I'm not particularly interested in more signage for the sake of signage.
Would you want to switch out existing signage that we have with Brandon signage for parking lots?
Yes. Now, I wouldn't want to, you know, increase the volume, but if it were to simplify and streamline, then I would be in favor.
I would agree with you. I think that that's probably low, a lower priority, replacing signage that already exists would be a lower priority, at least for me, but I agree.
Did we ever have a cost estimate for implementing this whole plan? I don't recall that we went that far, but...
No. And the signs with the different features that we require for our signs have, the price is a little bit more than a typical sign, because the decorative poles that we have, along with some of the features, in addition to the colors and the shape.
May I just a question? And I'm sorry, Ashley, if you said this, but this plan came to us from the EDC, but it was some time ago that they looked at it?
Six years ago when I was on it.
So I, well, that's helpful to the point that it, a lot has changed in economic development in six years. And so it might be prudent to ask the EDC to reconsider the recommendations. And perhaps they remain unchanged, but we've spent this much time on it. It seems that maybe they should, and there's changeover on that commission, too, they may want to weigh in.
I think that's a very good idea. We have the luxury of time to do that because we're planning for the 25 budget here. So we have the luxury of having them look at it and reconfirm or modify. But I think to summarize what I'm hearing is that there's still very much, much interest in doing this plan and implementing it. We want to update it through EDC, and perhaps we postpone budgeting or implementation of the signs at Harlem and Burlington and Long Common and Burlington and Quincy and are Long Common in Harlem and Quincy in Harlem, those are Long Harlem, based on what could be happening in the future. So.
East Burlington in Harlem.
East Burlington in Harlem. Thank you.
I'll say I, I agree with that off the cuff, without a lot of support. It just seems like a lot of signs. Riverside is so beautifully unadorned with signage, right? And I know we have other flags to discuss and wayfinding signage. And so my first reaction is it feels like a lot, but that's without a lot of thought, looking at how it's spread out. That's just a reaction. I think Trustee Mateo's point was a good one about the IDOT approvals. And so to the extent that there's at least support, if we believe that gateway one should be prioritized, we could start maybe seeking those approvals on the earlier side while we decide about the other ones. And then my last comment here is just, to the extent it's palatable, I am interested in Trustee Koss's recommendation about the bike paths. Cyclists travel in packs. They often stop for muffins, and they tend to have disposable income. And so bring them in, right, and help show them where we are. So if it's consistent with what we're doing here, at least something to consider.
Did your research, or do you remember the directory sign, what was discussed about where it would be and what businesses would be on it?
That, I, well, so the sign itself was identified as, I apologize.
So I don't believe there was specific restaurants. It was just general shopping, dining, things like that. So similar to the signage that is currently over by the zoo that was installed over on Ridgewood, where it has shopping and dining this way and to direct people into the Central Business District. So I don't, so the board wants specific businesses. That can be challenging because if a business closes, then you have to update the signage. And so perhaps stay in general.
I just wanted to find out the history.
Okay.
Any additional comments, questions? I think you've got some really good direction.
Yes.
And I think we, staff can proceed from that, and we will, you know, get the EDC involved, and this will come back to you some future date, no later, maybe sooner than the budget season.
Yep, capital planning.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 16 of the Village Code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois regarding solicitors. Attorney Clerk Soul or Attorney Pickrell, who wants to kick it off?
I can kick it off quick. This is just an ordinance proposing amendments to the village's solicitation ordinance. After speaking with Attorney Pickrell, we noticed some standards, regulations that need to be updated to be in alignment with constitutional standards, and also just provide a more streamlined application process. It was missing some important pieces, like how long is a permit valid for, and what kind of distinction can we make between types of solicitors and so forth. Before I turn it over to Attorney Pickrell, I just wanted to note you should have a slightly revised ordinance at your seat. You'll notice on page nine that there is a section redlined that we're getting rid of. I'll let Attorney Pickrell go over that, and as well as the other changes, but I just thought I'd shed light on that before Bob goes over.
Thank you, Clerk Soul. Yes, so this is just one of those updates. This was the last substantial update to the solicitation regulations. It was done in the early 2000s. There's been some pretty significant Supreme Court precedent since that time. So we're just amending, suggesting amendments to the ordinance to create greater alignment with the Supreme Court precedent. Solicitation is an interesting topic because it touches on several different areas of constitutional law. First, there's speaking involved. It touches on the First Amendment. It also touches upon business regulations and our authority and the rationality of doing so. Since this was last updated, one of the more significant Supreme Court decisions was the Reed versus Town of Gilbert case, which up until that case, municipalities have been able, although they, we were never able to regulate the content of speech, we could regulate different categories of speech differently. As you'll see here, we talk about charitable solicitation regulated one way, whereas commercial is another way. The Town of Gilbert case obliterated that distinction and essentially said, look, if we have to look at the content of what someone says to determine what law applies, that is a first amendment issue, A and E, then it's subject to strict scrutiny. So we have eliminated that distinction, and now it's just solicitation. And we've defined it in a way that is neutral with regards to speech. It's too easy to redefine it by its commercial activity. And solicitation now is just simply selling something or asking for something of value while going door-to-door on private property. Additionally, courts have, over the last 10 years, become increasingly skeptical of regulations related to solicitors. The idea is that courts have observed that solicitors are often seasonal workers, they're fairly low income, and many times solicitation regulations act as a total barrier to solicitation, either by having excessive permit fees, requiring that solicitors pay all outstanding fines before getting a solicitor's permit. All of these present an economic barrier, or having a very specific background. These present barriers that courts have found to be irrational, that they, and essentially being a ban on solicitation. So we went through, and I thought the ordinance was, did not achieve that. We just clarified some of the language. And in doing so, we have to keep in mind, what is our, you know, what is our goal in having a solicitation ordinance? What's, what are we trying to achieve by having it? And it was apparent to me from the ordinance that the village's goals are the avoidance of nuisances. You know, you don't want a solicitor going at someone's front door and banging on it for a minute, or additionally, public safety. You want to have solicitors have not had a background that includes felonies, burglaries, fraud, various sex offenses. And so we clarified and just went through the language. You'll see that the, each regulation is directly in support of one of those rational goals. Additionally, to address the financial issue, we kept the permit fee, but if the applicant can establish that they are unable to pay it, or they have a financial hardship, the fee will be waived. So people who are working for a big company, they'll pay the fee, but, you know, someone who can't pay, they will not have to. One of the other things we added was that since this regulation applies to really anybody going door-to-door selling something, it would apply to the Girl Scouts, which we didn't want to have that happen because we feel those other Girl Scouts probably do not need a solicitation permit unless the board directs otherwise, yes?
To be clear, they're not allowed to go door by door.
Okay. Well, they also can stand on private property, selling things and...
There's a lot of rules.
Okay, well, the Girl Scouts in Oak Park seem to be flouting some of those rules. But that's for two then, Girl Scout corporate. They, I will say this, we wanted to be absolutely sure that they and others were not in part of this. But more, so there is a section just saying this does not apply to anybody under 18. And the rationale behind saying 18 is that this ordinance requires essentially two things of the solicitors. First, that they identify themselves, and second, that they not have a particular criminal background. For people under 18, their criminal backgrounds are confidential, so we wouldn't be able to check it. And, you know, with regards to the Girl Scouts, who are often 11 years old, they don't have any form of identification. So they would really not be able to comply with this. So we just simply made it not apply to them. Two other things, one other thing to add, and this was my addition this morning, which I was drinking my cup of coffee this morning and thinking about solicitation, and I, pardon me, so I'm the cause of this late amendment. You'll see in Section 31611, we invoke, we reference at least a state law regarding the ability to solicit in public ways. I eliminated that reference, I suggest we have eliminated that reference rather, because this is an evolving area of law. The state of Illinois has certain laws that courts have already been highly critical of, and they are likely to undergo revision if not be held unconstitutional. And so by referencing that law in our ordinance, we would, our ordinance would necessarily change if that law would change. Similarly, if that law were held unconstitutional, we would have effective invalidating our ordinance. So I thought, let's just strike the reference. We don't need it. Our ordinance stands on its own. So that's the basis for that amendment. And that's my presentation. If anybody has any questions about any of the amendments, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions on the amendments? I would like to ask, I don't know if Manager Francis is probably is the one that, sorry to surprise you with this, but could you just very briefly tell us, what does, what should a resident know when someone knocks on their door?
Well, we do keep a running list of those that have valid solicitation licenses on our website. And actually, probably Clerk Soul is better situated to explain what the process is, because he facilitates all the solicitation licenses.
Yeah. So like Manager Francis said, under trending topics on the village website, there's always a solicitation article, and it'll have a list of active solicitation permits in town. If they're not on that list, you can call the non-emergency dispatch number, which I don't know off the top of my head, and report that. Other than that, we have no solicitor signs or solicitors not invited, I can't remember what it says, available at Village Hall that you can put in your, near your doorway. And other than that, I would just say if you're suspicious, just call Village Office or the non-emergency number.
And there are a number of times where the police department will get a call to go out and confirm that they have an active license. And typically, they will have the letter stating that they've been approved. So if a person is not able to produce that, someone knocks on your door, then absolutely do not open up the door and call the police, and they will check into it to ensure that they are, have a valid solicitation license.
And again, you can get a sticker from the village for free. It says, no solicitors. If you don't want to be bothered, you have the right to put that on your front door, and they're not supposed to knock on your door when they see that.
Common solicitors in town will be contractors wanting to replace your roof or something like that. Otherwise, it's a lot of electrical companies wanting you to sign up with them, you know, other contractor-type items. And then there's charitable solicitation, which is the Lions Club throughout town, Salvation Army, and so forth.
I want to add, too, that if the individuals in their home feel uncomfortable confronting the solicitors or don't want to put up a sign, they can simply not answer the door. And then after the third minute of the solicitor being on their doorstep, they're in violation of this code. If they repeatedly, some solicitors do this, just knock and knock and knock and knock, or they keep repeatedly hitting the doorbell, that's all considered a nuisance under the code. They can just simply call the police department and have them removed.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Can I get a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
So seconded.
Motion by Trustee Koss, second by Trustee Galagos. Please, Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee March Osgo.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee reports. Are there any other trustee reports this evening?
I just have one mention, and that is that longtime favorite from the Lions Club, the annual chicken dinner is back at Houndship Hall, and that date, save it, yes, I know. Save it for Sunday, April 21st. Tickets will be available for any Lions member.
Excellent. Thank you.
Winner, winner.
I have one that's coming up a little sooner than that. Our next C4 meeting, which is open to the public, is Thursday, March 28th at 7:00 PM in the terrace room of the library. So anyone who is interested in getting involved, there are still many things to do and many ways to do so. So hope to see you there.
Thank you. If nothing else, we'll adjourn this.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that.
Motion, any, can we do a voice?
You can do a voice, yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.